Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for quieting down for a moment here. We welcome everyone that's here today and we are calling the meeting to order. We extend our greetings to everyone that is in the building this evening, as well as those that are listening on media. And at this time, I'm going to ask if you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Directly after that, we will go into our kids' at hope hunter's treasure pledge. And then after that, we will hear from our treasure coast students, high school students with a special presentation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we do our treasure hunters pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I'm committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children of youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated. Thank you. And at this time, we will have our treasure coast high school student performance under the direction of Amber Sullivan, and they will provide us with a special dance presentation.
We're going to dance. We're going to dance and have some fun.
Thank you so much, Ms. Amber Sullivan, for your talent in dancing and what you do in the arts with our students and young people. That was an excellent dance. If there are any parents who are here today, please stand up. We want to honor you of these wonderful students. Please stand with us. L. and of course, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you so much for helping us with your children. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. And I, we are prepared as a board to receive any comments for the proposed 2025-26 Student Progression Plan and the proposed adoption of amendments to 19 School Board. Follow any comment, public comments. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment on any of the adopt proposals, please do so at this time. You can come to the podium. Seeing none, board members, do you have any comments or questions on any of the proposals? Hearing none, superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just wanted to say before I make the recommendation, once the vote is taken on the policy adjustments, I do have a special request that I will ask of the board. So with that being said, I recommend the board adopt the proposed 2025-26 Student Progression Plan and amendments to School Board Policy Number 1121.01, 3121.01, 4121.01, background and screening and employment history checks, Policy Numbers 1129, 3129, and 4129, conflict of interest, Policy Numbers 2460, exceptional student education, Policy 2800, educational services for students in Department of Juvenile Justice education programs, Policy Number 3130, appointment, assignment, transfer, and promotion of instructional staff, Policy Number 5130, withdrawal from school, Policy Number 5500, student conduct, Policy Number 5610, removal, out-of-school suspension, disciplinary placement, and expulsion of students, Policy Number 5630, corporal punishment and use of reasonable force and restraint, Policy Number 5780, student-parent rights, Policy Number 7101, building permits and code enforcement office, Policy Number 7540.02, web content apps and services, Policy Number 8420, emergency management, emergency preparedness and emergency response agencies, and Policy Number 8531, free and reduced price meals, and lastly, Policy Number 9200, volunteers.
Superintendent has made his recommendation that we adopt the following policies. I will ask for a motion in a second. So move Mr. Ingersoll, second by, was that Arison? Ms. Arison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries five zero. Dr. Prince, you said you have a request.
Yes, Madam Chair. I do have a special request to rearrange the agenda for timeliness. I'm going to have to leave the meeting after some of the voting items and some of the recognitions. And Dr. Summer will take my place, but the sequence will be proposed would be the consent agenda. The board would review that and vote on that. Then we will have the special orders of business, followed by the special thanks and recognition, followed by my superintendent's report. And then at that point, Dr. Craig Summer, our chief of schools, will take my place on the dais, and he will finish up the superintendent's comments after we have a presentation by the Western Grove principal, Latonya Green.
Okay, Dr. Prince, we'll accept that. So we will, at this time, do our consent agenda. Board members first, the adoption of the consent agenda. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Mr. Ingersoll, Ms. Harley, seconds. And that's to adopt the consent agenda. Superintendent, give me your recommendation, please, for the approval.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Superintendent has recommended that we approve the consent agenda items as submitted. If there is any member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda, please do so at this time. Or if you would like to have separate discussion on any of the consent agenda items. Okay, then let's go move forward with the vote. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay.
I made a motion.
Attorney, were you saying something?
No, I just didn't hear the second.
Okay, Ms. Harley, second. Mr. Ingersoll has made the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries then.
Chairman, real quickly, too. I'm going to have to leave because I have a previous engagement with another school activity, but I just wanted to appreciate you moving this forward for me.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll, and thank you for your service in St. Lucie County Schools. We know your kids has to do with the school event. Thank you. Okay, so now we will go right into our special order of business. Ms. Lydia Martin, would you please come forward?
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Dr. Prince, board members. This week, October 13th through 17th, we proudly recognize National School Lunch Week, a time to spotlight the vital role nutritious meals play in student success and well-being. I would like to invite Deborah Weiss, Director of Child Nutrition Services, to the podium who will share information about the proclamation.
Good evening. This week, we celebrate the School Meals Program, which is a vital component of the educational day. Currently, we have 70% of our students in St. Lucie Public Schools are economically needy. During the 24-25 school year, we served an impressive 4,805,404 lunches. It is my pleasure to welcome Abigail Nash, a ninth grader at Fort Pierce Westwood High School, to read the National School Lunch Week proclamation.
Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for 79 years through advanced practices and nutrition education. And whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and academic achievement of our nation's children, and whereas research shows students are receiving their healthiest meals at school, and there is evidence of continued for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of our school nutrition programs. Now, I therefore, Abigail Nash of Fort Pierce Westwood of St. Lucie Public Schools, do hereby proclaim the week of October 13th through 17th, 2025, as National School Lunch Week. And I encourage all residents to become aware of this benefit of the National School Lunch Program and good nutrition habits for their children in hope of achieving a more helpful scenario for today and the future.
Superintendent, I ask for your recommendation on this proclamation.
I recommend the board accept the proclamation. And once concluded, we will move down to take a wonderful picture with our young lady who just.
Board members, we have a recommendation. Can I have a motion? So moved, Ms. Harley, second, Ms. Arison. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries five zero. At this time, we will go down to the front.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin G. Perry to share with us the next special order of business.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Prince, each year, many students find a home in a music class by joining the band. Along with joining band comes the expense of purchasing an instrument. That's where Bluebird Educational Foundation steps in. Through the recycling in the Key of E program, better known as RIC, community members donate gently-used instruments to the foundation. The foundation then refurbishes those instruments and donates them to a St. Lucie Public School student who is demonstrating great musicianship and dedication to the instrumental music class. Tonight, Bluebird Educational Foundation, in its 20th year, will be donating 16 instruments to some deserving students. We're joined tonight by Mr. Chuck Schaefer, treasurer of Bluebird, who'd like to share just a couple of words.
Good evening, members of the St. Lucie County School Board, educators, and community partners. On behalf of Bluebird Educational Foundation, I want to extend our heartfelt thanks for the opportunity to support the incredible young musicians in our district. Your openness and collaboration have allowed us to do what we love the most, invest in the creative potential of our students. Thanks to your support, we've been able to donate a collection of musical instruments to band programs across the county. These instruments are more than just tools. They are passports to self-expression, discipline, and joy. They represent our belief that every child deserves access to the arts regardless of circumstance. We also want to express our deep appreciation to our music partner, Melody Music, out of Vero Beach, Florida, whose expertise and generosity made this possible. Their team worked tirelessly to repair, tune, and adjust each instrument, ensuring that when these students pick them up for the first time, they feel empowered and inspired. This collaboration is a beautiful example of what happens when schools, nonprofits, and local businesses all come together with a shared purpose. We are not just donating instruments. We're investing in the future, in confidence and in the soundtrack of our community. Thank you again for your trust, your partnership, and your continued commitment to the arts and education.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Let's pass out some instruments. Would you join our wonderful board members, please? Starting with Northport K. A., their awesome band director is Ms. Kettler. When I call your name, would you and your teacher, please, come forward? Jaden Biller. Cindy Jean Baptiste. Aiden Ru. And Tessa Torres. From Dan McCarty Middle School, their wonderful music teacher is Mr. Regis. Malik Gibson. To Uni of Brady. And Lexi Anne Dakara. From the Creative Arts Academy of St. Lucie, better known as CAS, their wonderful music teacher is Mr. Renellas, Corinne Robinson, and Khalif Uribe. From St. Lucie West K. A., awesome music teacher, Mr. August, Marcus Blois, Daniela Rojo, and Verrero Bologna. I don't think they are going to be able to join us tonight, but Mr. August is with us. And from Oakhamack K. A. School, Mrs. Eisenhower is the wonderful band director there. Ashley Joseph, Ashley Vicencio, and Patricia Fernandez. I'm going to ask everyone to give it up one more time for our wonderful partner, Bluebird Education Foundation. And just in case anyone has a gently-used instrument in the closet that you used to play or that your child used to play, donate them to Bluebird so that we can keep the music playing here in St. Lucie Public Schools. Thank you again.
As an A-rated destination district, St. Lucie Public Schools continues to set the bar for academic achievement, and these students exemplify the excellence we strive for every day. Today, we proudly recognize an exceptional group of students who achieved perfect scores on their end-of-year state assessments, an accomplishment that not only reflects their hard work, but also the dedication of our educators and families. Once again, these students not only achieved a level five on their assessment, they got perfect scores, not one single question wrong, which is amazing. And we will start with our students who earned this for an elementary test and who are still in elementary school. And when I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. Aubrey Byers, grade three math. Cadence Castleberry, grade three ELA reading. Nicholas Jean, grade four math. Martin LeChance, grade three ELA reading. And we will get a photo. If any of these wonderful students' parents are here, please stand to be recognized. Congratulations to these exceptional students. Next, for our students who are currently in middle school who achieved a perfect score, we have Steven Canizaro, grade five science. Alejandro Shankay, grade seven FFA math. Anika DeJelly, grade eight fast math. Evans Philibert, grade eight fast math. Elijah Jackson, grade five science. Cyrus Jean Pierre, grade eight fast math. Nathaniel Laguna, grade eight fast math. And Kyle Marcellus, grade eight fast math. And if any of these parents are in the audience, please stand to be recognized. Congratulations once again to these exceptional students. Next, we would like to recognize our star employee, star special thanks and recognition. This month, this is going to Deputy Melvin Goicachaya, a school resource deputy at Legacy High School. Congratulations. This nomination was submitted by Susan Mannion, one of the Assistant Principals at Legacy High School, and she wrote, "Deputy G is an exceptional presence on our campus, consistently going above and beyond in his role as our School Resource Deputy. From the moment students arrive in the morning to the time they board buses in the afternoon, Deputy G is there, visible, engaged, and committed to their safety. His regular interactions with students and staff foster genuine trusting relationships that make a lasting impact. Whether assisting at the gates, supporting dismissal, or joining staff in cafeteria duty, Deputy G is always hands-on and approachable. He strikes the perfect balance between professionalism and relatability, making students and staff alike feel supported and secure. In all my years in education, I've never seen a school-based deputy as actively involved as Deputy G. We are truly fortunate to have him here at Legacy." So congratulations, and if we could have the administrators from Legacy join us as well? Up front? There she is, Ms. Mannion is the one that nominated her. Him, sorry. Congratulations. Congratulations, and that concludes our Special Orders of Business for this evening.
Congratulations to each and every one of you that have received some recognition or award for your tremendous work that you are doing and have done within this school district. We thank our deputy that was honored with the STAR Award this evening, as well as all of our children that received instruments or made those Fives on their assessments. So at this time, we're going to go right into our superintendent and staff reports on selected topics.
All right, first of all, I'd like to say a very special happy birthday to one of our principals, Jackie Lee. Jackie, look, you look... Jackie turned 25 today. Yes, yes. But anyway, happy birthday. Hope you got plans later, you know? So... So I wanted to, first of all, I'm going to bring up our new principal, not new principal, she's been up. She's been building the school, Latonya Green, and tonight, Ms. Green is going to be presenting the committee, the name choices of the school to the board and board members between now and our Board Workshop on the 28th. On the 28th, you will select and rank order your choices for the new school, and you will select the new school name on the date of the Board Workshop. So Ms. Green is going to be sharing this presentation with you, and at the conclusion of that, I know we almost look like identical twins, but Dr. Summer will be taking my place on the dais, and he will conclude the superintendent's remarks with a couple of notes before, as part of the superintendent's report. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Green for your remarks.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince, and guests. It is truly an honor to stand before you this evening and share the work of our naming committee for the new K-8 school that will be located in Tradition. It is, it, sorry. Naming a school is more than just putting words together. It's about creating an identity, a connection that builds pride in every stakeholder and a sense of belonging for every child, a place where students don't just learn, but grow into who they are meant to be. Our committee consisted of parents, staff, students, and community members. Guided by School Board Policy 7250, we work with purpose and care to select names that honor our past, celebrate our present, and inspire our future. On behalf of the committee, I am proud to present three names for your consideration. Fifteen voices, thirty-four choices, three that rose to the top. Each name presented this, each name presented this evening represents our foundation, our growth, and our vision for what's ahead. Our first name for consideration is Heritage K-8. When you hear heritage, there's a sense of strength. It reflects the shared values, stories, and pride that have shaped St. Lucy County across every community. Heritage reminds us that what is built together honors what came before us and inspires what is next. Our second name for consideration is Sunset Grove K-8. When you hear Sunset Grove, you can almost picture it, a warm, welcoming place where learning feels calm and connected. It's gentle but full of light, a name that feels peaceful and full of purpose. Sunset Grove represents growth that happens together and leaves a lasting glow at the end of each day. Our third and final name for consideration is Tradition Lakes K-8. When you hear Tradition Lakes, it feels active, like movement and progress. It connects directly to the heart of the tradition area, representing growth, innovation, and opportunity. It's modern and forward-thinking, yet still grounded in the spirit of community that makes St. Lucy County special. As a committee, we took great care in selecting names that honor where we are and what this school will stand for in the years ahead, because we all know, once a school name is chosen, it begins to take shape through its symbols, its traditions, and the pride it represents for the people who will call it home. Now, let's bring that identity to life through the colors that will represent who we are. We all know that our name gives us identity, but colors give us our soul. They set the tone, the energy, and the sense of belonging that every student and staff member will feel. Together, they tell a story of pride and purpose. Our first primary color is crimson, represents our strength, the determination, and excellence that drives us to move forward. Our secondary color will be burnt orange, is our spark. It carries energy, creativity, and passion, keeping our purpose alive. Ivory cream, which gives us heart, is where integrity, warmth, and unity live. It reminds us to lead with compassion and do what's right as leaders. Soft gray gives us our balance. It centers us in focus and harmony, grounding our vision with calm and clarity. Each color on its own, each color can stand on its own, but put together, they create balance, depth, and identity. They remind us that strength, spark, heart, and balance aren't separate pieces. They're what makes us whole. And as those colors come together, they begin to paint the vision of what's next, the place where this identity will live, grow, and inspire. As this presentation ends, let's look at what's ahead. The journey continues toward August 2026, when the school opens its doors, and in the words of the great Nelson Mandela, Mandela, "It always seems impossible until it's done, and now it feels like we are well on our way to completion." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Ms. Green, we thank you for your presentation with giving us the official, top three official school names. We thank you for that, and also congratulations again on being the chosen principal for our new K-8 school. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Dr. Summer, do you have any more?
Deserved that round of applause. That was fantastic, and it's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Only 130 school days till we open.
That's it.
But who's counting?
Who's counting? Thank you.
So, thank you, Principal Green. So as Dr. Prince mentioned, I'm going to have a couple of updates for us and things that we're really excited about. First is our union contract settlements, and we're very pleased to announce that all union compensation agreements have been successfully settled with each of our bargaining groups. And we extend our sincere appreciation to each of the negotiating teams on both sides for their dedication, and most importantly, collaboration throughout the process. And last week, our partners at EASL ratified their agreement with 100% support, and CWA looks to do the same ideally on November 1st. Second, our EDC luncheon recap, that's our Economic Development Council luncheon, which was a huge success last week. We welcomed into this very room 175 business and community professionals that gained valuable insight to our Classrooms to Careers initiative. They also learned a lot about our school district and what led to St. Lucy earning its first A as awarded by the Florida Department of Education. Only one in three school districts earn that designation. We're very proud of that. Sure. And we cannot thank our business partners enough for their continued support of our district, and of course, and most importantly, our students. Third is our Realtors Breakfast and those highlights. We welcomed 80 local real estate professionals last week as well, and tend to learn about our district programs as well as our initiatives. It was a fantastic meeting because they learned also about our student assignment process. And they, as we all know, real estate prices are highly correlated to district success, so therefore we look to great real estate prices in the coming months. Great meeting. Fourth, we really want to extend gratitude to a partner school district, very important, and a heartfelt thank you to Manatee County Schools for their swift and compassionate support this weekend. Two out of our four buses during a Fort Pierce Central field trip carrying 150 band students were involved in an accident, and they stepped in immediately and provided support. They gave us replacement buses and drivers to ensure that all of our students came home safely. Their staff remained on site. They maintained constant communication with ours, our school district, and that really exemplifies the community, the community of educators in our state. And to our staff, can't thank you enough to Transportation, Juccunti Prince, Don Carter, Jennifer Sears, and the entire team for stepping up in a big way, big time. But same for the Fort Pierce Central admin team, Principal Gardner, AP Santoro, as well as our district team, Dr. Kevin Perry, Lydia Martin, Terrence O'Leary, working through the evening on Saturday into Sunday morning, making sure that every one of our students came home safe. Kudos to you. Thank you. So one last item, we want to, you know, wish our sports teams the best of luck. We have some football games on Friday, October 31st, which also happens to be Halloween, so we wish everyone a happy Halloween, and you can celebrate that. However, please don't wear your costumes or your masks to the game. We're not allowing that this year, although we wish everyone a safe and happy holiday. That concludes our report. Thank you, Dr. Mills.
Thank you, Dr. Summers. Much appreciated. Now, we're going to back, go backwards, and we're going to start with our EASL report. Mr. David Freeman, welcome to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Summer. I want to begin by recognizing the recent settlements for compensation and benefits. Both CTA, I'm sorry, both CU and Protec ratified the agreements unanimously at 100%, and CTA followed at 98%. That kind of support doesn't happen by accident. That kind of, it's the result of long, honest work between the district and the union. I'm proud of what we accomplished together. Our agreement is stronger than what many of our colleagues in other districts were able to achieve. It shows that when labor and management sit down in good faith and focus on shared goals, we can get results that matter. But we also have to be honest. This was the best outcome possible under the funding we were given. Too much of what's called a raise isn't truly one because the state never provided recurring dollars to make it sustainable. And the only thing worse than a small raise is having to take it back the next year because there's not funding available. Insurance costs keep climbing. For some, their increase in pay will barely cover the increase in premiums. This is not how we retain great people or build long-term stability. We are fortunate to live in a, in a community that recognizes the value of what we do. The voter-approved referendum continues to be a lifeline, and I want to thank our community for standing with its public schools. Unfortunately, we can't say the same about the state. We keep hearing about a so-called record education budget, but when the numbers shake out, it amounts to about a $17 increase in teacher paychecks, and not for everyone, only teachers with three or more years of Florida experience. None of our critical support staff were included. That's not a record of investment, that's a record of neglect. What most people don't see, and honestly, why would they, they have their own jobs and families, is how much of that so-called education funding never even reaches public schools. Here in St. Lucy, roughly $18 million is diverted every year to private school scholarships. That's money that would otherwise stay right here in our public schools, and that doesn't even include the growing voucher programs that operate with little or no public oversight. So our task together this year was monumental, finding a way to raise pay for everyone with what was left. That meant tough choices, deciding what could be laid or cut in a budget where everything is essential. And yet, together, we still found a way. That's something both the district and the union should be proud of. But I'll close with this. As much as I enjoy the work of bargaining here at home and the occasional metaphorical fisticuffs, that's not where the real battle is anymore. The real battle is for the soul and survival of public education itself, because you can only negotiate with what exists, and too much of what should exist is being siphoned away. Until Florida recommits to fully funding its public schools, we'll keep doing what we've always done, showing up, standing together, and doing right by our students and community, no matter how hard they make it in Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you, President Freeman. We appreciate your comments. At this time, we'll move right along to CWA report, Ms. Martha Vickers. Okay, there's no report from CWA this evening. So we move forward to our informational reports. Board member, you have your informational reports on charter school monthly financial reports for July and August. And as always, board, I remind you that no action will be taken on this. And basing it on state statute, there is no action, no voting, but it's for your information only. Attorney Scott Cole, do you have any report this evening?
No report.
Okay. So we're going to go right on to the school board members' report. We will begin with Ms. Richardson, and then Ms. Arison and Ms. Harley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Summer, I think we are on the same page. And not to repeat everything that you just said, because everything you said is in my report, most everything. But I do want to thank PTESH and the EDC for their invitation to that leadership conference. It was, it was a luncheon. Speaker Allison Van Hoos delivered a message that has stayed with me. Mrs. Van Hoos challenged us to rethink everything we thought we knew about leadership. Forget titles, forget corner offices. Real leadership, she argued, comes down to two things: serving others and choosing to act. It's that simple and that profound. She identified adaptability as the non-negotiables for modern leaders. I'm going to repeat that. She identified empathy and adaptability as non-negotiables for modern leaders. To every educator listening, whether you teach in a classroom, serve meals, drive a bus, work as a paraprofessional, maintain our facilities, or support in any other way, I want to be crystal clear, you are a leader. Full stop. End of discussion. Every day, you shape minds, you nurture potential, and light paths forward for the next generation. That's leadership at its finest. Mrs. Van House reminded us that stories have power. Everyone has a story. We all have stories, and these narratives shape who we are. So here's what I ask of you. So here's what I ask of you educators. Never forget that every student walks through our doors carrying their own unique stories. When you truly listen and take action on what you hear, that's leadership. Your influence reaches further than you could ever, ever, ever imagine. And you know what? You're already doing this, day in and day out. I want to take a moment to remind you just how powerful your work is. I see the difference you make. I recognize your dedication, and I never overlook the tremendous work that you do. You are valued. And I'm going to say this as many times as I need to, because I want for you to know that you are valued. These are not just words. You are valued. You are appreciated, and your impact cannot be measured. The confidence rekindled my dedication to hearing your stories and building genuine connections. I have heard some stories, and they have ignited a fiercer determination in me to advocate, to listen, and to represent those who needs a voice. As a side note, our superintendent received the Pack the House Award. My appreciation extends to all the principals who participated. This evening, we recognized National School Lunch Week, a celebration of nutrition professionals who ensured our students receive wholesome, appealing, and accessible meals that fuels learning and growth. This week reminds us that school meals are more, are about more than nutrition. They are fundamental to students' health, achievement, and wellness. It's an opportunity for, or entire opportunity to honor these vital programs. My sincere thanks goes to every member of our food service staff. I especially want to recognize the Centennial High School Cafeteria Team for their exceptional commitment to creating memorable dining experiences for their students. Chef, I'm not going to say it right, Soya, Soika, Soika, and her A-Team consistently find creative ways to uplift, inspire, and positively impact our students' days. You are truly making a difference. Centennial High School Cafeteria Team are making a difference in some very special students' lives. Finally, I want to acknowledge our Transportation Department, particularly the drivers who ensured our students' safe return from a recent band competition. Dion Bennett, Bus 4356, Terry Wine, so wines, Bus 3662, Eglon Hamilton, Bus 4365, and Jeffrey Mallett, Bus 4361. On behalf of St. Lucy County families, I extend a deep gratitude to Manatee School District, and particularly the Manatee Transportation Department for their kindness, their support, and for bringing our students home safely. Thank you, if you're listening, Manatee, and I hope you get this message, to our first responders who answered the call as well. Mr. Gardner, he was en route to make sure that the children were safe. He left here, and he was heading there to make sure that the children were safe. Our assistant principals, they were waiting to welcome them home. This is our village in action. To our educators who interact on a daily basis with our students, I will forever acknowledge and recognize you as our frontline heroes. That's who you are, our frontline heroes. You are the ones with your boots on the ground. You are leaders. Thanks also to the district team who kept us informed throughout. Mr. Jacunte Prince, Mr. O'Leary, Mrs. Martin, and Dr. Perry. To conclude where we begin, where real leaders serve others. Real leaders, true leaders, choose to act. Empathy and adaptability are non-negotiable for modern leaders. This ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Richardson. Ms. Arison?
No report.
Ms. Harley?
Yes, just a couple of quick items to touch on. You all have elected me as the legislative representative for this board, and many days in the past month, we've spent with our various consortiums and other school boards, working on our platform for the upcoming year. And as of last Friday, we finally have it finished with some items that we feel are very realistic and hopeful that we will be able to get the support in the legislative body this year. The district advisory council resumed their meetings last night. We had a great turnout. Some of you I see that were here last night. We're spending two nights together. So, thank you for the schools and the community folks that participate in that particular advisory council. And I am very happy to say that our youth advisory council will be back with us next month. We have our elections coming up this month, and we have a great group of kids, so we're looking forward to another fantastic year with them. And a special thank you to Mr. Brad Lehman for letting me be part of your 20th anniversary festivities a couple of weeks ago. Rain and all, it did not dampen spirits whatsoever. The kids had a great time. It was tied in with the class of 2015 and their 10th year anniversary, so it was a phenomenal time. It just really makes me feel old, that it's 20 years. But congratulations on a well-done celebration. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Harley. I just want to say thank you for all of us that are working together, as President Freeman mentioned this evening. You know, we do everything we can as a district to work together with our unions. And, you know, we can only do so much with so little coming from the state at this time, but we are determined to continue that work, continue to be that village, and, and work together to reach the perfection that we also desire to have. At this time, we do have one scheduled speaker, Ms. Christine Thaddeus. Would you please come to the podium? You have five minutes to speak. Welcome. You're becoming a nice, familiar face, and, and we appreciate your voice. And so, at this time, five minutes, we have our attorney right here that will keep the time for you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, teachers, staff, and neighbors. I came here tonight planning to talk about school funding and about how our classrooms and teachers needed more resources. But something urgent has come up, and it goes to the heart of who we are as a community. Right now, there is an effort in St. Lucy County to place a memorial in honor of Charlie Kirk. Before anything else, I want to acknowledge the tragedy of what happened. Charlie Kirk was murdered while giving a speech. That act of violence was horrific, and no one, no matter their beliefs, deserved such a fate. But tragedy does not erase truth. Charlie Kirk built his public platform by spreading division, by saying things that demoned others and fueled resentment. His record, his words, and the tone of his public life stand directly against the values of our schoolwork every day to install in our students. He once said that black Americans were better off in the 1940s under Jim Crow laws. He joked that if he saw a black pilot, he hoped he's qualified. He even mocked a student for, to speak out against gun violence. And he has used his influence to divide, not to unite. These are not the words of someone we should be memorializing, not in our community, not in our county, that strives to honor all people are equal. Think about what that says to the students who fill our classrooms. Here in St. Lucy, our school board, our teachers, our bus drivers, our administrators, and our staff represent every race, every culture, every background. Many are people of color who work every single day to make this county stronger, safer, fairer. To even consider honoring someone who demoned people of color, women, and marginalized groups, right here where so many of our own public servants are people of color, is profoundly disrespectful. We should be honoring them. We should be naming streets and memorials after the educators who have given decades of service, after the coaches who mentor students, after the veterans who came home and served our communities, after the volunteers who read to children and feed the hungry. Those are the people who deserve recognition. When we choose a name for a public road or memorial, we are sending a message about who we are and what we stand for. What message do we send if we name something after Charlie Kirk? Imagine being a young black student walking past that sign, knowing this was a man who said people like them were better off under segregation. Imagine being a teacher of color or an LGBTQ educator trying to teach respect and inclusion while your own county lifts up someone who spent his career attacking those very ideas. That would not make our, our county stronger. It would make it smaller, meaner, less worthy of the people who live here. St. Lucy is better than that. Our schools are built on respect, compassion, and truth. We don't teach children to bully or mock or divide. We teach them to think critically, to treat others with dignity, and to stand up when something is wrong. So tonight, I'm asking this board, every, and everyone listening, to do exactly that. Please use your voice, speak out against this proposal, make it clear that our schools and educators and our community stand for inclusion, not intolerance. And ask everyone here tonight, teachers, parents, students, neighbors, please contact the county commissioners. Let them know that naming memorial after Charlie Kirk would dishonor the people of this county. Tell them we want to honor unity, not division, respect, not resentment, service, not self-promotion. This is the moment to be heard. Silence in times like this is complicity. We can grieve as a loss without rewriting history. Let's give our children something to be proud of, a community that values kindness over cruelty, courage over cowardness, and inclusion over hate. Let's make sure that when St. Lucy County is remembered, it is for how we stood together, for decency, for equality, for what's right. Thank you. And here's another thing to take action. Vote no on House Bill 113, naming college roads after Charlie Kirk. Please contact Representative Dana Trabalski and Representative Toby Oberdorff, and urge them to vote no on House Bill 113, which would allow public colleges to designate streets as Charlie Kirk Road. To put it plain, it is like hanging a Confederate flag at every public college in Florida. It's divisive, disrespectful, and wrong. Stand up, speak out, protect integrity and inclusiveness of our public institutions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Thaddeus, for your voicing and your speech. And now, we are going to come to a close of our meeting this evening. I'm praying that all of you will have a peaceful, restful evening with your family and loved ones. We are adjourned.